There you go.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to find out if I know someone.
I know.
Well, yeah. You know, there's no comment.
Nine o'clock, folks.
You want my stuff is here.
The what?
Right there, Panama.
Want to keep us time?
That's what the ties are for. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, who's she's got it.
I know one.
I have one.
Okay, we're starting in one minute.
Oh, you know. Actually, it is a two today now. Give me a second here. Good morning, everybody. Wel- welcome. Thanks for attending today. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, Indian River County Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we will start out with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces. And of course, don't forget about what yesterday was. I know it's already passed, but yesterday, of course, 22 years ago, was the fateful day of the attacks on September 11th. Then we'll have an invocation given by Dr. Timothy Womack of the First Presbyterian Church, the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our Vice Chairman Susan Adams. If everybody would please rise. Almighty God, we give you thanks this day for our freedom, for we remember that freedom is not free. It demands constant diligence. It demands sacrifice and commitment to the principles for which our nation was founded. We give thanks for all those who served us so well that day, who sacrificed their life, and those who continue to suffer as a result of that tragedy. So, Lord, let us remember rightly and let us do diligence so that we may find unity in our service, that we may not be divided by disputable issues that in the long term ultimately will be forgotten, but let us be bound together by principles that hold us together in this great country, in this great state, and in this great county. Bless those who serve us and allow them to be guided by those principles this day and forevermore. We pray in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, thank you. And everybody noticed we were just a little delayed, especially those maybe watching you on TV. We're a little delayed, but we had a picture-taking session with the United Way, with the Indian River County employees donating almost $14,000 to United Way this year. I think that's awesome. So, that was that. All right, moving on to number four, Commissioners additions to listings to the agenda of emergency items. If you saw from the original one, 10B1 has been pulled, that has been satisfied, and we need to add resolution to Council Attorney Matters or any county administration matters?
Under item 13.
The Attorney Matters?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's add it to the county attorneys' matters, that resolution. That's the only thing I know of. Anybody have anything else?
This chair move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, approved as amended, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, moving on to proclamations and presentations. We have four of them to do today, and we're going to start off with proclamation designating the month of September 2023 as Hunger Action Month, and that's why you see us all in orange apparel. And we'll have our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Adams, to present.
Fantastic. Ladies, do you want to come on up to the dais while I read the proclamation? It's my pleasure to read a proclamation designating the month of September 2023 as Hunger Action Month, whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, and the Treasure Coast, with 31,221 family households in Indian River County unable to afford the basic costs of living. And whereas, Indian River County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our county and to support efforts to serve the needs of Indian River County citizens. And whereas, Indian River County is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank and educating people about the role and importance of food banks and other hunger relief organizations in addressing hunger and bringing attention to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas, food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, are coordinating Hunger Action Day on September 15th, 2023, and will continue to host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in our local communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the month of September 2023 be designated as Hunger Action Month in Indian River County, and the Board encourages all citizens to exercise observance. Adopted this 12th day of September 2023 and signed by all five county commissioners. Ladies, welcome. I know you are doing a lot of outreach throughout the community on a regular basis, but tell us a little bit about what you're going to be doing for Hunger Action Day.
Thank you very much. My name is Maureen Pringle, and I'm joined today with Deb Neufeld. And on behalf of the Treasure Coast Food Bank, the President and our CEO, Judy Cruz, our dedicated staff and volunteers, our Board of Directors, thank you so much for proclaiming September as Hunger Action Month. As a member of the Feeding America network of food banks, the Treasure Coast Food Bank is leading the fight against hunger in our community by securing millions of meals and providing them to people facing hunger. We're proud to partner with more than 300 local agencies, food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other emergency food providers throughout Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, and Okeechobee counties. Throughout the month of September, we've had a number of events. This past Saturday, we had the Outlaugh Hunger Comedy Show, and coming up is the Third Annual OutRun Hunger. And we have a lot of information on our websites at StopHunger.org if you want more information on that. Thank you again so much for supporting us in our fight against hunger.
Thank you. Come on up and get your proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you all for wearing orange. I was here last year, and of all the county commissioners, you guys do the best.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 5B. This will be a proclamation designating September 16th, 2023, as International Coastal Cleanup Day in Indian River County, Florida. This will be presented by Commissioner Law, and I think Kendra and her crew's up here. Everybody come on up. Bring them all.
Come on up.
For our first proclamation, you have to have a large group, right?
Welcome, Kendra, and allow me to present this proclamation, designating September 16th, 2023, as International Coastal Cleanup Day in Indian River County, Florida, whereas September 16th, 2023, the third Saturday of September, is a day recognized around the world in inspiring and encouraging the act of removing debris from the environment in coastal areas to create trash-free seas. And whereas, the global movement of coastal cleanup on this day has led to the removal of over 350 million pounds of trash from the critical waterways in coastal areas worldwide. And whereas, Indian River County, Florida, is made up of 22.4 miles of coastline bordering not only the Atlantic Ocean, but it's inclusive of one ocean inlet and its estuary of national significance, the Indian River Lagoon. And whereas, in 2022, approximately 800 community members of Indian River County engaged in the act of service by volunteering on the International Coastal Cleanup Day, removing 2,305 pounds of debris from the beaches of the Indian River Lagoon, enhancing and helping to restore these critical coastal habits that provide economically and environmentally important functions. And whereas, we join Coastal Connections and the 24 additional park champions made up of local charities, service groups, and businesses who make the largest coastal cleanup in Indian River County possible and successful each and every year. And whereas, all residents are encouraged to participate in a cleanup on this day to keep waterways and recreational areas in Indian River County clean of debris. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that September 16th, 2023, be designated as International Coastal Cleanup Day, and that citizens of the county are urged to join in this day by cleaning up debris and protect the coastal habitats that ultimately protect and provide for our community. Adopted this 12th day of September, 2023, and signed by all five county commissioners. Congratulations and welcome, Kendra.
Thank you very much. And so, as everyone may know, my name's Kendra Bergman, the founder and executive director of Coastal Connections, and it's exciting to be here today because for more than 35 years, the Ocean Conservancy has been inspiring a global movement for trash-free seas through an event called International Coastal Cleanup. And as of today, local coordinators from 50 U.S. states and over 150 countries around the world join together to manage and host a coastal cleanup on the third Saturday of September each month, each year. Every year, new publications and scientific studies identify and support the need to reduce and eliminate pollution made by our human-generated trash and critically important animals like dolphins, whales, our sea turtles, and seabirds are washing ashore sick and dead with guts full of our human waste, primarily composed of plastic pieces. So even our fishing industry is being affected by this, by fish consuming all of these small plastic pieces, which provides a significant concern that maybe, that can be managed and improved each, by each and every one of us through a simple behavior just from picking up trash found on the ground, or even reducing or recycling the waste that we generate in our own household. So this year, for the second year, our organization Coastal Connections, with the help of Keep Indian River Beautiful, is serving as the local coordinator for International Coastal Cleanup Day across Indian River County. And thanks to those 24 park champions comprised of local charities, service organizations, government staff, and even businesses, we will be able to manage and provide supplies for 20 different park locations and for over 1,000 volunteers on September 16th. So last year, just a couple of stats I want to provide everybody. Last year, we had 800 community members join and, join in and volunteer, and those 800 community members removed 2,305 pounds of trash from our coastline. And this year, we're encouraging everybody and inspiring everybody to increase that amount of debris cleaned up to make this the cleanest our community has ever been. And as of this morning, we had over 900 people registered for the event, so already bigger than last year. So I want to encourage, thank you very much for encouraging everyone in our community to participate on September 16th from nine to 11 to make this the largest cleanup we've ever had.
Great, thank you.
Questions, any questions? How do they register if they haven't?
Oh, yes, thank you. If anybody does want to come in and register for the cleanup in these last final days, the registration is, can be found on our website, coastal-connections.org.
Well, congratulations, and thanks for doing this.
Yes.
Good job. Shift to the right a little bit.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, that's awesome. All right, moving on to item 5C. This will be a proclamation dedicating September 23rd as Sickle Cell Awareness Day. This will be presented by Commissioner Boss, and I think we have some special guests or some folks that are here to, to accept this.
All right, well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd invite the recipients to come forward. Thank you. Proclamation dedicating September 23rd as Sickle Cell Awareness Day. Whereas, sickle cell disease is an inherited red blood cell disorder that can cause chronic pain and other serious health conditions, including vision problems, fatigue, joint damage, heart issues, bacterial infections, kidney failure, and strokes. And whereas, in the United States, more than 100,000 people are diagnosed with SCD, which primarily affects the African-American community, those afflicted are often forced to put their lives on hold due to extended hospital stays. And whereas, over 370,000 people worldwide lose their lives to sickle cell disease each year, and there is no known cure. Although stem cell and bone marrow transplants sometimes work, low donor participation and treatment-related complications often put those options out of reach. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners supports all efforts to address and research this disease in hopes of one day finding a cure. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that September 23rd, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Sickle Cell Awareness Day in Indian River County, Florida. Adopted this 12th day of September, 2023, by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, and signed by all five commissioners. And welcome today. Would you like to speak?
Real quick, good morning, and thank you so much. This is setting history here in Indian River County, to my knowledge. This particular disease, excuse me, Alma Miller, 1758 Laconia Street, Sebastian, Florida, concerned citizen and activist as it relates to things that pertain to the citizens and the community here in Indian River County. I've been before you before, but today, I'm Alma Miller. I want to thank you all for this disease. It impacts primarily people of color, and we do not have enough awareness as it relates to this. I think this is an inaugural celebration and awareness event that we're going to do on the 23rd of, of September, and I thank you even for considering it and, and giving this proclamation today. You know this young lady that's standing next to me.
Good morning, Maya Miller, Sebastian, Florida. And I'm also a county employee. This disease hits home for us. We have family members who are definitely living through the struggle of it every day. Shakidra Red Holt is a county resident. Her daughter, Kamani Holt, is, I'm not even sure if she's back home yet, but she's in Orlando dealing with the pain and going through a crises right now of sickle cells. She's been dealing with it from birth, and she's now 16, so she's been dealing with it for that long. And this Awareness Day hopefully will bring just that awareness to the disease and for us to bind together as a community to support those who deal with it every day. On the 23rd, there will be a parade similar to MLK Day. The festivities will be in the Victor Hart Park afterwards, starting at 8:30 in the morning, the lineup on 45th Street at MLK Gas Station, and it will travel west on 45th Street to north on 43rd Avenue and ending at Victor Hart Park. If you have any questions or want to be a part of the parade and the festivities, Bessie Nesbit is the contact person. And if I may, her number is 561-631-7735. Thank you so much for this time and for this proclamation.
Thank you very much for joining us today and for raising awareness of this devastating illness. It's an important job to do, and thank you for undertaking it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing this. We appreciate it. I got an orange scarf on. No worries, no worries. We'll put the good filter on.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is. Moving on, last but certainly not least, we do Commissioner Fleischer something to do here, but it's an honorable thing to do. 97 years for, for one church in Indian River County. I think that's awesome. This will be a proclaiming, celebrating Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church's 97th anniversary, and this will be presented by Commissioner Fleischer, and I believe Michael Montafistian and other church members are here to receive, so come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is an honor to present this proclamation for Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church. It's a reflection of, of who we are in Indian River County and the endurance of this establishment to continue to go forward through many different turns in our history. So it's, it's my honor and pleasure, and thank you for being here today. This proclamation is celebrating Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church's 97th anniversary, whereas Indian River County Commission and government recognize the profound significance of Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church in Indian River County, the surrounding communities, and the state of Florida. Whereas, on this joyous occasion of Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church's 97th church anniversary, we celebrate the remarkable journey this sacred institution has undertaken and its longstanding commitment to faith, community, and service. Whereas, under the steadfast leadership of Pastor Elder Michael Monfiston, since Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church was, has demonstrated an unwavering dedication to the betterment of the Gifford community and to the surrounding areas by shepherding them towards the greater heights of spiritual growth, community engagement, and social outreach. Whereas, through the help of God, Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church has not only grown spiritually, but has also expanded physically to meet the ever-increasing needs of its congregation and the local community. And whereas, the people of Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church have tirelessly worked together, embodying the spirit of unity, compassion, selflessness, to uplift and empower those in need, making a lasting impact on the lives of the countless individuals. And whereas, Indian River County Commission expresses deep appreciation for the invaluable contributions made by the Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church in fostering a sense of unity, hope, and resilience within the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that Indian River County Commission and government hereby extend heartfelt congratulations to the Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church on the auspicious occasion of its 97th church anniversary, duly adopted this 12th day of September, 2023, and it is signed by all five county commissioners.
Perfect. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, everyone, to all of the commissioners in Indian River County. My name is Michael Monfiston. I serve as the pastor of the Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church, and I want to thank you for recognizing our 97th church anniversary. For 97 years, the Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church has been a beacon of light in the community, in the Gifford community, in the surrounding areas. Our mission is to empower, equip, and educate disciples to meet the spiritual and non-spiritual needs of our community. We actually have a few outreach programs, from youth outreach to evangelism on every fifth Sunday of the month, where we go beyond the walls and we give out toiletry items, sometimes food, and really try to meet the needs of our community. So just want to say thank you. I've been there seven years as pastor and out of the 97, and I definitely want to say thank you for recognizing us, and hopefully we will get, well, we will get to 100. So thank you all, thank you, thank you for recognizing us. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all you're doing. And again, when you look at Indian River County, when you look at all that you're seeing in national news, and you're seeing the interreaction, that is constantly challenging, to know that you're there, and if I, if I rise up to 18,000 feet and look down, you're making the difference. You're making Indian River County that special place, the place that is not on that national scope. So we appreciate everything. You're part of the great success of Indian River County. Thank you very much, and your show is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. It's a great pleasure to be here to present to you a preview of our new website and our content management system. This effort has been ongoing for a little more than two years. Some of you will remember, in April of 2021, we came before you, and at that time, the county's web presence had largely grown in ad hoc fashion. We had 14 websites, separate websites, with nearly as many domains that those websites were operating under. Your direction at that time was to consolidate those websites and bring them under our primary domain, our IRC gov.com domain, and to begin to look at a new website, and we've done that. So we came back to you in April of 2022, and you approved the requirements document for that new website, and that work has been ongoing since. We had hoped honestly to have the website available in the April to June timeframe of this year. However, our supplier had some difficulty meeting our cybersecurity requirements. Happy to say that we've overcome those difficulties, and we are now ready to launch the website this Friday. And in advance of that, I'd like to share a preview with you, but before I do, I'd like to give a little credit where credit is due. I get the privilege of being here this morning before you and showing you this work, but I'd like to acknowledge those that have actually been the hands-on doing the work. First and foremost, Mr. Scott Johnson, our webmaster, really, really, just a ton of work in the last couple of years to produce this product for us, so I really appreciate his efforts. Along with that, Mr. Eric Dietrich, our digital media specialist, our system administrators, Mr. Zach Portwood, Mr. Samuel Medors, and last but not least, certainly not least, our cybersecurity specialist, Ms. Rachel Miller. Scott, do you want to bring up our new site? So what I thought I'd do this morning is sort of start with our splash page or our main page, because the website's been intentionally designed to allow people to get to things very quickly. I'll walk you through that, and then we'll touch on a few of the elements that are capabilities. And this website contains a number of new capabilities. It's not just a collection of pages. There are actually applications that these links will lead to that modernize the way we do business, including workflows for citizen submissions. So starting with the main page, if you'll notice at the top, the ribbon, you can hover over any of these sections, and you'll come to a number of links. They are organized in a way that makes our citizens, it makes it easier for our citizens to find things. So starting with government, you can see here, obviously, we have the Board of County Commissioners' agendas and minutes, but also, there you go, thank you, Scott. So you'll notice that link takes you right into our Granica system, where you can access agendas and minutes and preview videos of previous meetings. You'll also see here the links of all of our boards and committees, and the minutes for each of those are underneath the membership also, so you can read about that particular committee, its function, the membership, and then access the minutes of those meetings. Moving just to the right of that, services, so here you find all of the county's departments and divisions, so you can look at the projects that those divisions have going on as you explore these links, and maybe, Scott, if we want to just touch on parks, I think that's a good example. So as you drill down into that division's website, you can see what the goings-on are in that division, if you will. Now, one of the powerful features, and I probably should have mentioned this at the top, is in our previous website, all of the content came from Mr. Johnson, so it would be a department or division reaching out to Mr. Johnson, working with him on the content for that particular page. This new system distributes that to any number of content creators within the department or divisions themselves while keeping a consistent look and feel to each page, so the individual departments and divisions can create their own content and publish that. There is a workflow for authorization of that content before it gets posted to our production site, ending with Mr. Johnson, our webmaster, making sure that that content is both appropriate and formatted correctly before it goes live. So let's take a look at the "I want to" section, please. So this was an ask of the board. We wanted to make it easy for our citizens to find services within the county, and I think this is one of the very powerful features of our new website. So looking under the reports section, where I feel we'll probably see a lot of use from our citizens, you can now make a report. You'll see that brings you into an application that allows you to essentially identify a location using a map. Thank you, Scott. So you can sign in as a guest, or you can create an account. If you create an account as one of our citizens, the benefit is you get feedback. So as that report progresses through its workflow, you'll be able to get feedback on that. If you sign in as a guest, you can still check the status of a particular event that's been, you know, submitted, because you'll see when you go in in just a moment, you'll see any other events that are, you know, currently pending, and you can actually, one of the nice things is, you can upvote an event. So if I report an event, maybe it's a pothole, for example, and, you know, the next day, someone else comes along and sees that pothole, they may go to report it and see that it's already been reported. They don't have to actually report it again, they can click the upvote, so now we have a count of how many people are reporting that same problem. Okay. And Scott's demonstrating an example of that. This is an example of a traffic signal, so you can see that the report would then enter a workflow after it's been made, and it would be routed to the appropriate division personnel to handle that particular work request. Okay. Let's also look at the "I want to," and maybe, Scott, if we could just demonstrate an application. So for example, the bottom of the column on the left there, yeah, right, so this is another new feature of our website. So previously, if you wanted to apply for a service, generally under our existing site, you would go to that link, and you'd get a PDF document that you can either, you know, type and fill in or handwrite, and then you'd have to email that document or bring it in. No longer is that the case. In fact, we don't want it to be the case in many of our forms, because some of our forms require personally identifiable information, you know, name, social security number, address, those types of things, and we don't want those being handled over email, it's just not a secure format. So now in this new workflow, what happens is, from the time those things are entered, they are encrypted in transit with a TLS encryption, they are encrypted at rest on the server where they store, and they are maintained that way each time they're recalled by staff. So now you can apply, for example, for utilities, and that would permit, you can upload any documents that are necessary to support that application. Those documents are reposed in a secure fashion, and the people on the backside of that, so the utilities department would be able to access that information and correspond with you if you need to revise your documentation, submit additional documentation, that can all happen through this application, so we maintain that information in a very secure fashion. Okay. All right, so going back to the homepage, you'll scroll down just a little bit, what you'll see there are quick links, so this is a scrolling set of quick links that we can use to get to various portions of the website. And then just below that, you'll see the county news, so any of the news that we've posted in our news section, if you want to click on View All, Scott, that'd be fine. So any of our news listings that are here will rotate through that news section from the main page.
Can I just add that the departments on their own pages can add their own news and then roll it up to the homepage? So the county as a whole is contributing to the news of this homepage, which is a really, really great feature.
Right, and that's one of the powerful features of the content management system, where it's not all coming from one group, it's coming from the entire county. Okay, let's go back to the homepage, Scott. We scroll down just a little bit further. Now here are our meetings and events calendars. The three primary that were decided is the main meetings calendar, which is an aggregation of all meetings from any calendar, any group's calendar that is part of our website. The library has a specific calendar, and then the events section are any events that are happening, and then within this, you'll see the first four, or the next four, I should say, and any one of those show up to the right. If you click on the View All, now you'll get the entire calendar for the month, and you can then go by group or entity. So any department or division that has a calendar as a part of their portion of the website will have a tab here, so you can drill down and see what's going on in that particular area. Okay. If we scroll down just a bit further, here, this is a collection of our social media feeds, so whatever's happening on our Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, will be brought into this section, and you can quickly access it or link out to it. And then just below that, we have a stay-in form, so this is our Get Connected section, so this is how to connect with us in the various digital media formats that we have. Okay. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
This might be the best day of my life.
I know you've been anxiously awaiting this for a very long time.
Best day of your life.
That's awesome. That website is going to be so much more responsive for the public, just to be able to navigate through. I know the current website we have, which is, which is great, but even for me, who kind of lives in this world, sometimes it's hard to find the information. This is just, I think it'll be a great tool for us to communicate with the public and for them to communicate with us, so good job, it was definitely worth the wait, fantastic, fantastic job all the way around.
Thank you very much. Again, credit to the team for all the hard work.
I'd like to add an interesting factoid about the photos you're seeing here. We thought it would be an interesting idea if we let the county staff pick the photos that we launch with, so we ran a poll with about 30 pictures that we, in conjunction with the
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, excuse me. Put out a poll to the employees and let them select the top five photos that we'll launch with, so this was truly a team effort in whole county to have this design on launch day, so.
And those will change over time, right? We have a collection of photos.
Yeah, we're a little more diverse in the sunset water-type photos that were chosen, and I have some ready to mix in as we get forward a couple more days.
I noticed the airboat picture did not make the top five.
Oh, the marsh.
I am looking forward to getting into the mix.
Yeah, it's on the list, it's in the rotation.
The lake is coming, the marsh, oranges, it's all coming.
No, it's beautiful, I'm just giving you a hard time.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
I just want to say, that's very user-friendly, and so, you know, so appreciate that, just to echo our vice chair's comments, sometimes it's difficult, even for those of us who are within the network, to access certain information, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Dan, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, everyone.
Dan, I know when, you know, I was, just to tell you, I was a fairly new commissioner, and I brought this forward because I was fairly frustrated with our website initially at the time, because I'm not that computer savvy, but I'm not completely, you know, an idiot when it comes to doing it, and I would, I would have a hard time finding some information, especially early on, and when, and you were just newly on too, and I think we kind of met at the right time to say, we've got to, we've got to do something better for this, and I brought it to the board, the board was very accept, you know, accepting at that time to move ahead with this, and our county administrator at that time, Jason Brown, the same way was very adamant about moving ahead with this, and at times it went slower than I would like, but I always kept in touch with you, and you were filling me in, and I'm glad I did, because sometimes a good thing and a good work of art takes time.
Takes a little bit of time.
And Scott, thanks for all you've done, I know you have just been, you know, this has been every day of your life for the last pretty much two years, along with everything else you had to do, but, but I'm proud of what you all done, I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and I think we'll, we'll get a lot of, you know, compliments on this, and I know it's a work in progress, there'll be things that need to be changed, maybe things that work better, but, but you and your staff, and Scott and everybody, I want to, I want to thank you all personally and on behalf of the board for your efforts.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. And as you mentioned, we are big fans of continuous improvement, so any feedback is a gift in our mind, so if the public or any of you or any member of staff have input as to how we might improve the site, we certainly welcome that.
Well, what's the official launch time and date, Dan?
First, start of business Friday morning, so that's, that's, we're doing that in the way of a sort of a soft launch, we're going to launch it on a Friday, so that if we do discover any issues or problems, we'll sort of have the weekend to smooth those through. We don't anticipate any, but we like to have a little buffer there to work with those things, and then, you know, go in strong by Monday morning.
Good deal. Again, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. All right, that's a good thing. All right, commissioners, we have to do this separately, since it was two meetings, we got the approval of the minutes, the 6A, the regular meeting of July 11th, 2023. Move approval. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Law, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. 6B, 2023-2024 Budget Workshop Meeting of July 12th, 2023. Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And don't forget, tomorrow, we will have our next preliminary meeting of the Budget Workshop at 5:01 tomorrow afternoon, and I'll make it known now, Commissioner Adams will not be with us tomorrow for that, because she will be doing her duty as a Florida director member of the Florida Association of Counties on behalf of our county over in Seminole County with the innovation and policy thing, where we figure out how we're going to battle what Tallahassee's going to tell us to do.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm sorry I'm going to miss the reading of the light, street lighting districts, but I, I'm sure one of you guys will do, just remember, per parcel acre, per parcel lot.
All right.
With your website, it'll be easy to access the video.
Right.
All right, moving on to 7, information items for staff or commissioners not requiring board action. I will tell you that in 7A, the venue calendar, and I'm sure it'll be coming up on the website when it gets launched, is full of things to do, and there is one thing that, in there that caught my eye, and that was their having ballroom dancing at, at the IG Center later on this month, and being that I'm going to make a shameless plug here for myself right now in the commission meeting, that I'm becoming a ballroom dancing expert here pretty soon with my Dancing with the Stars thing, which will be on November 18th, so if anybody would care to make a donation in my shameless plug, you can go to the website of Indian River County Head Start and click on my picture and my dancing partner's picture and make a donation, it would be much appreciated. It all goes to a great cause, but that's one of the few things we have going on there, along with a bunch of other stuff, so I think it's, it's a great, and again, I think you'll see that on the website coming up. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, anything you wish to discuss or have polled?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to poll 8M Mike and 8P Papa.
Eight, what was the second one? D Delta?
P Papa.
Eight P, 8M and 8P. Anyone else? Anybody from the public wish to have anything polled for discussion? Come forward, sir. Name and address, and then what item you want to poll.
Tom Sullivan, 4187 West 16 Square. 8Q.
8Q. All right, I have 8M, 8P, and 8Q from the public. Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, move approval as amended.
I can.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to prove as amended, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Sir, let's start with yours first, and then we'll let Commissioner Fleischer finish up. Let's go ahead and start with 8Q.
Yeah, I just happened to be reading it, and I noticed that they were going to do away with the 15-foot lake distance. Did you read it by any chance? The proposal to build a boathouse? I just don't know. I mean, I just think that's letting the, the head of the camel into the tent, and after that, usually the body follows. So I don't know if you're changing the land regulations that we have for this particular instance or what we're doing. That was my question. My thoughts on it-
Name and address and then what item you want to pull.
Tom Sullivan, 4187 West 16 Square. Eight Q.
Eight Q. All right, I have eight M, eight P and eight Q from the public. Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, move approval as amended.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to prove as amended, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody in the public wish to comment? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Sir, let's start with yours first and then we'll let Commissioner, Commissioner Fleischer will finish up. Let's go ahead and start with eight Q.
Yeah, I just happened to be reading it and I noticed that they were going to do away with the fifteen-foot lake distance. Did you read it by any chance? The proposal to build a boathouse? I, I just don't know. I mean, I just think that's letting the, the, the head of the camel into the tent. And after that, usually the body follows. So I don't know if you're changing the land regulations that we have for this particular instance or what we're doing. That was my question. My thoughts on it were basically if that fifteen foot were not granted, would they have that much room for the homes? And I'm starting to wonder if the PDs are becoming so prolific that these larger companies are starting to understand this could be used. Is that all in one question?
All right. Mr. Administrator, do you want to answer this? Show me how Rich come up.
Hi.
Rich Burka, Public Works Director. So in this particular instance, Providence Point has submitted to the county a request to remove the fifteen-foot maintenance area along the back of all of our, of stormwater ponds that's required by code. In this particular case, they've come up with a unique product that they'd like to build around this pond, which has seawalls that are on the pond itself. The cross-section also shows that they will be able to maintain it if they drain the lake if, if maintenance is required. And they also have maintenance areas that they can get to. Today's technology allows for dredging and other ways if, if they ever have to clean the pond. So this waiver request is just for this one instance, this one product inside this PD. The P&amp;Z has seen this. Planning is, planning has approved this. We've gone back and forth with planning on this and they have no objections to it. So for this particular product, for this particular PD, we see no reason why they can't try this particular product. And also in there, if the waiver is granted and they decide not to build this product, the waiver is rescinded and the maintenance firm will go back in as part of a standard PD.
Commissioners, any questions? Sir, any questions of Mr. Spark?
Maybe a safety issue on the docks for children? Would they be, would they be treated, would that lake be treated the same as a pool would be treated? In other words, would they have to put up this, a substantial barrier? I don't know.
I, I would say that, that it's a lake, it's like any dock that we have throughout all of our waterways in the county, in the county. But that can, that's not something I can answer at this time. That's out of public works.
And Rich, the one other thing I found, Rick, I'm sorry. The one other thing I found amusing was it, it talked about the cost of maintenance, how this would eliminate the mowing of that area. Unfortunately, I was the president of an HOA. The, the mowing, everybody knows how much it costs. But I think that what was later mentioned was the upkeep if in fact something did happen to the hydraulics, that they would just have to call an engineer in. Would the initial developer be responsible for that for a period of time? Or would they offset that to the community?
So in like any PD that has an HOA, the construction is the responsibility of the developer, of course. And then as normally with HOAs, they run the HOA for about till they have fifty-one percent. And then they turn it over to the HOA citizens. So for the first however many years, some of these could be two years, some of these could be ten, the developer is responsible for main, the maintenance of there, if there is any maintenance.
So, so after that period, this novel approach would be the responsibility of the HOA?
Yes, sir. Either the HOA or the property owners. I haven't seen the documents.
Just curious. Okay. I just think we're headed down a dangerous path where we do that. Because I've only been here for ten years and I've seen the, the PD being used more and more. I spoke to the fellow who was the prior attorney, Alan Pakowitz, or I believe you know him. And we ran into each other and he said, I don't need, I said, isn't it interesting? And his comment to me was, I don't know why we have the land regulate, development regulations anymore because everything is going PD. And what I found with the PD, as I've looked over these, and I didn't want to, I happen to live on Forty-first Street and it became a major hub of construction and takeovers and all this stuff. But when, when people say they're gonna put a ten-foot distance between homes, which I heard last meeting I was at, what that really turns out to be is a six-foot distance between homes because the roofs come within six feet. Now, if you're an adjacent landowner, it, it, this becomes, I don't want to say problematic, but it's different. I would just note that, and I, and I know this is going a little off topic. In my neighborhood, they had to raise the adjacent land to meet restrictions of water. Okay, they raised it up six feet. And then they built single-family homes that have fourteen-foot ceilings in the living room. You can ima, and then they used the ten-foot PD. So now some of my neighbors have a pool ten feet away from their back fence, which I guess a lot of people have in Florida. But it was just curious because in our particular development, there was a lot of land around us and Forty-first Street is developing. I understand that. But I'm just saying, I think we're going down a dangerous path as we move away from the land regulations and keep on granting these PDs. Because I've, as I've mentioned to several people, these are not local contractors. You know, this is Pulte that owns De Volster. This is GHO, which is a subsidiary of Green Brick Properties, which is owned by David Einhorn. Okay, a very wealthy New York conglomerate. All right, and, and they're coming here and they're getting PDs all the time. Now, my question was, what's the reason for the PD? And then when I spoke to Ryan Sweeney, he said, we can control this. Well, I, I, I don't see the control. So I just ask you to look at this. And again, I've talked to other people and people tell me this is, this was a quote from someone who's a member of your establishment, I'll call it. And he said, that's what they want. And the curiosity was, who is the they? Are the they the people who live here and have lived here for many years, former fireman, former sheriff? Okay? Or are the they the developers who are coming in and saying, this is what we're going to do? Those are the only questions I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Commissioners? Mr. Chair? With that said and explained? Move approval. Mr.
Second on eight Q.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Moss. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Or do you have something you want to say?
No.
No, she got it. Yeah.
The guy at the end.
The minister.
Do you want to say something? You got a weight in your hand.
Sorry, sir. Mr. Sullivan, I would just encourage you to be on the lookout. I think in the September, October timeframe, or October timeframe, there will be a series of workshops. The county's in the process of evaluating and appraising its comprehensive plan. And there'll be no less than six workshops, you know, where we bring residents together, talk about local issues. And that the comprehensive plan is the cornerstone upon which zoning and land development regulations are developed. So I would encourage you to go ahead and keep an eye out on those or you can reach out and I'll make sure you get on the list for those workshops.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Moss. Anybody from the public? Or no, it was you, it was you. Okay, Commissioner Law, okay. Okay, rephrase that. Commissioner Fleischer made the motion, second by Commissioner Law. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Commissioner Fleischer, eight M, Veterans Services Legal Agreement, City of Sebastian Historical Building Lease Agreement.
Eight M Mike, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, once again, I'm very excited about this item. I wanna just, and ready to approve without amendment. But I will say that I, I want to thank Melissa O'Ant, Mike Zito, our mayor Fred Jones from the City of Sebastian, the entire council, administrative staff. You see, we were placed in a predicament. We want to give the very best for our veteran services. We wound up with a spatial concern, as you're aware, and it was moved quickly, discussed with the Sebastian mayor. And this, this contract moved so swiftly in, in the spirit of doing our very best for our veterans. The, the contract is minimal, to say the least, for the lease. And we'll be able to serve our veterans in Sebastian at the main complex. And we'll also be able to afford the, the space that's needed for another constitutional in the other Sebastian office. Mike, did, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Administrator, Mike Zito, Deputy County Administrator. Now, thank you for recognizing the efforts of staff. I mean, this space is just ideal for our Veteran Services Office. It's first floor, handicap access, handicap parking, just an ideal location. And I just want to thank Mayor Jones and Brian Benton for their swift cooperation in this endeavor. And we're ready to move in as soon as our IT team, you know, gets it connected up. And I'm looking forward to it.
This happened within like six weeks and it's a testament of the relationship that we have with the municipality. With that motion to approve, thank you.
Seconded that. All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by myself. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Eight P, Commissioner Fleischer, award of bid number 2023041, Jackie Robinson Training Complex Walking Trail, Indian River County, nineteen oh eight.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Again, along the same premise, as you recall, I, I don't think just Commissioner Adams was here about four years ago, we had discussed the, the nine-hole golf course and with the city. It took some debate. It took garnering support. And the, the trail was moved forward. And it's, it's great to, to see the, the relationship has come to fruition, that we will have a, a walking trail that will best serve the city and the county and the Jackie Robinson Sports Complex and be another draw and, and enhancement for our community. With that said, I did have a question as to now that we have the approval of the, the bid, which was within the, the projected range, when will the work begin? And I see all of the, the legal requirements of the contract, but when can we anticipate this to be into completion mode? Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, sir. Richard's coming. It's a hundred and twenty days from the notice to proceed.
Right. And that's the legal description, so we're gonna, we're gonna see this this year.
Probably in, I'd say the early part of.
Get started.
Completed, yes. Well, yes, it'll get started.
Thank you, thank you. We made the move four years ago and we're getting it done. So I'm really excited and say again, it's a testament of the relationships involved. Rich?
So after today's approval, it'll take about six weeks to get the contract put together and signed and get it back. That's standard. After that, we'll meet with the contractor and discuss. There's a long lead item on this project. It's a bridge. It could take six to nine months to get. So we don't want to issue notice to proceed too fast and have a trail that's just partially done while we're waiting on parts and pieces because of material delays or material acquisition. So we'll do the best we can. But remember, we're, we're up against a lot of issues in the procurement area of the country. So we'll do this one pretty quick, but the bridge will take some time.
Temporary expectations, but it's getting done.
Worst case, best case scenario, we can be under construction before Thanksgiving and get the trail done and be waiting on the bridge.
Great news. Thank you. Ms. Chair, motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. Rich, can you come back at any point in time with a drawing or, you know, conceptual?
I can show you that right now.
Or you got one already?
I have ready for you.
Okay.
At least for where the trail's coming. All right, so here we go. Go ahead, next one. So basically, this is where, you know, everybody's familiar with Jackie Robinson Training Center. It's gonna go to the east of Forty-third Avenue and on the, and north, south of Twenty-sixth Street. Go ahead. So this is basically the south half of the trail. So basically, what you can see here is that we're gonna have an access point off of Forty-third Avenue and it will cut through the middle as we're required to have parking spaces available for Jackie Robinson Training Center, big event. So this is gonna be a two-fold area. Not only will the trail, as you can see it winding around through the, the southern half, it actually in the southwest quadrant, it goes over one of the golf tees. And we're gonna have a bench up there and a little plaque in that area. And it to the east or the right side, you can see where the bridge is gonna go over the lake. So we're putting a bridge over the lake. It's gonna connect to the sidewalks that go to, to the clover leaf. So people will be able to park and utilize that and go back and forth between Jackie Robinson Training Center without having to go out on a Twenty-sixth Street where there isn't any sidewalks at this time and try to get in that way. Go ahead. Oops, back up one. There we go. So this is the north end of the Jackie Robinson. As you can see, there's interconnecting trails through it. Again, it's a multi-function. It can be used for parking, it also just for trails for exercises. We also have what is a parking lot that we're redoing because the parking lot is in disrepair and we're gonna completely resurface it, get the drainage back. And then there's also the clubhouse building, which we're looking into for utilization of county of staff for county business. So with that, that's basically what we see.
Thank you. And I see, and Monty Foles is here. I just want to say thank you for, you were part of that process and accepting the vision that we could make this a really special place. And just thank you for your understanding.
Commissioners, any questions? I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by myself. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right. Moving on to number nine, Constitutional Officers and Government Agencies, nine A. Supervisor for elections, Leslie R. Swan, requests to roll back revenue into twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Madam Supervisor, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here today to respectfully request that the revenue that we've received for verification of candidate and initiative petitions and data lists be rolled back into my twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Today, we verified thirteen thousand five hundred fifty-four petitions and filled twenty-eight data requests. So this revenue going back into my budget will help pay for some of those unfunded mandates in Senate Bill seventy fifty.
Motion to approve. Last motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Law. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item ten. This will be public items. Public hearing will be the first order of business, be ten A one, Local Provider Participation Fund Approval. And Councilor, are you handling this?
I'll, I'll kick it off.
Okay.
As far as anything is concerned. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the third time that the board has seen the Local Provider Participation Fund Approval matter before you. It benefits our three local hospitals. I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Poche. He's in-house coun, in-house counsel with AHCV. And he will go into greater detail on this matter and also introduce some of his hospital folks that are with him here today. Michael?
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners and staff. My name is Mike Poche with Adelanto Healthcare Ventures. I'm here to say thank you for your, pardon me, thank you for your support of the directed payment program. It helps close the Medicaid shortfall between what hospitals receive for the services they provide to Medicaid beneficiaries and what they actually get reimbursed, which is about sixty cents on the dollar. It also increases reimbursement for those services and allows the hospitals to either create or bolster existing. create or bolster existing initiatives and programs to provide medical services to the most vulnerable populations in the county. I have a couple of representatives from the hospitals in the county here today who are going to say a few words of thanks and explain to you how important this program is to their facilities in the treatment that they provide to these populations. It would be all right and appropriate. I'd like to call them up to say some words.
Hey, good morning. I'm Ron Beerman. I'm the President of Sebastian River Medical Center. And once again, I appreciate this opportunity.
One second.
Yes.
Hang on. Mr. Chairman, if you could open the public hearing so we could take the testimony and then proceed with.
Do it that way?
If you could, please.
No problem. Give me one second. Any more questions, Staff? Okay. With that, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Go right ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Once again, I'm Ron Beerman. I'm the President of Sebastian River Medical Center. I do truly appreciate your willingness to work with us once again for this important program. You know, it's, it's kind of an unusual statement for me to make as somebody who runs hospitals, and everyone thinks hospitals are just really doing well financially, but I'm gonna give you some striking statistics. Yes, we do lose money on Medicaid. We, we collect about 50% of our cost for every Medicaid patient that comes into a hospital in the state of Florida. But what's more significant is when you look at the global impact that healthcare is facing since COVID and, and other issues related to supply chain issues and overall inflation, 60% of every one of the 5,000 acute care hospitals in this country lost money in 2022. And that benefits no one. It doesn't benefit the communities we serve. It doesn't benefit the employees, certainly doesn't benefit the physicians. Every single penny that we can acquire to offset the losses for treating Medicaid patients, and that's a growing population in the state of Florida, is absolutely critical. Yes, we want to continue to be able to meet the needs of the community. We want to implement new technologies, which cost an awful lot of money, and certainly do an effective job of treating those patients who don't have access to primary care physicians and utilize the emergency rooms at the Cleveland Clinic facility and certainly at Sebastian River Medical Center. So your ongoing support is really critical to ensure the viability of the hospitals here in Indian River County, and I thank you very much for your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Warren Fuller, Cleveland Clinic. I'm not sure I can add much to what Ron mentioned. We do, we, we are grateful that the Commissioners created this fund two years ago. Year two went as planned. We expect year three to be the same way. And, you know, this really does help us maintain and expand our services despite these significant financial challenges we are facing as a healthcare industry as a whole. So thank you for your support.
Commissioners, as you can see, this, the funds that come from this directed payment program help secure the medical safety net in the county and ensure that these facilities can provide critical services to a population that is in, in much need of said services. So thank you again very much, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions of staff? Ms. Moss?
Not a question, more of a comment. It's so important to keep our hospitals healthy financially, and I appreciate all the work, you know, that's, that's occurred in this regard. It, it just benefits the entire community. And unless there are further questions, I'm prepared to move to approve the Local Provider Participation Fund Resolution and Letter of Agreement.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Moss, second by Commissioner Adams. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on to public discussion items. 10B2, it's gonna be a public discussion item request from Vero Lake Estates Property Owners, Mary Lou C. Ambriello, Reason Fire Station 15 and Traffic Control. Ma'am, welcome. Just please give us again your name and address.
I'm gonna give out some little handouts here to you guys. This is, uh, good morning. My name is Mary Lou Charmbriello. I reside at 8256 105th Court in Vero Lake Estates, and I'm here today to maybe educate you a little bit about Vero Lake Estates and update you a little bit and talk about traffic and also Fire Station 15. So I have some pamphlets I'd like to give to you just because. Here we go. The front is about Vero Lake Estates, and the back is some work I've done on the fire department for you. And, um, thank you.
Make sure the card gets okayed. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And anyone?
They're clear.
Now, I don't know if you're familiar, but this morning, just for, just for kicks, I went into MLS because I am a Realtor, and I went to check all the houses in Sebastian that were not on the water, were just single-family homes, and I did the same thing for Vero Lake Estates. And I want to let you know that the highest sale over the last three months was in Vero Lake Estates for $650,000 and $1 extra, by the way. So I don't know if you were aware that VLE is doing that well. However, our issue, a severe issue, is we, I, I manage 2,700 homes. The only complaint I get is traffic. That's it. We have, I think, 75 miles of roads. I think we have 15 miles of paved roads. We have 79th is like the Autobahn. You might as well, you know, when you get onto 79th, there's not one stop sign on that road. I believe that you should have a stop sign every half mile. When you go down 83rd, you go down a mile and a half before you hit a stop sign. You go down 87th, same thing. You go down 85th Street, which has no traffic at all, every two blocks, there is a stop sign, and nobody goes down that road. So the first thing I would like you to do is really and truly take care of this. We have 2,700 households. That's, and we're a family community, so we really and truly need to take care of this. All right, so that's my first thing. Second, we have roads. I've never heard of this, and I'm here 10 years or 11 years. We have roads with signs that, you know, say this is 85th Street, for example, probably not 105th would probably be right, that have stop signs, names, and they're not considered roads in the county. So that when I write a little love note to Rich, who is very responsive, by the way, when I ask him to fix a road or anything like that, he says that road is not a road. Okay? So I don't understand that, so we need to clean that up as well. We need to increase the budget for roads for, for Rich. I understand that, that you can't budget the money to Vero Lake Estates. I, I get that. But you know what? If you increase that budget, we might get a little bit of trickle-down effect, and I won't have to hear that, you know, we can't do things because of budget. Third, we're widening 101st Avenue, and that's really wonderful. We're gonna be putting in sidewalks, but before we do that, we really and truly need to pave 104th Avenue. Okay? We can't have, we can't have that, that road widened without taking care of other traffic. And then there's another thing that really and truly has nothing to do with the widening, but Vero Lake Estates has come a long way. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many of you have been out there. I know Susan's out there a lot. I know Joe knows about the community. Mr. Ehrman, you know me because my, your son rescued me from a Cobra, but it wasn't a Cobra, it was a python. But, so, I mean, and that's what makes Vero Lake Estates very unique, guys. I've worked, I come from Palm Beach County. I've never walked up to a house and had a guard turkey, you know? I mean, that happens to me here. But anyway, it's changed tremendously. I just sold two properties to NASA, the gentleman that did, the architect for the moon, for Mars, and the art, and the engineer for the moon. They live in Vero Lake Estates. They live in Vero Lake Estates. So just, but I'm gonna talk about Trevor Bishop. We lost, Trevor Bishop was the Vice President, and actually, she was really more the President than I was, and Trevor Bishop passed away very suddenly. And I'd like to see if we could have a road, maybe 101st or 104th, named after her. You have no idea how much she dedicated herself to this community. She lived, breathed, and worked Vero Lake Estates like, like nothing you've ever seen. I'm trying to think. Hopefully, I hit everything because I get nervous, believe it or not. So I wanted you to look at this because what, what I want you to understand is we have quarterly meetings. We are not an HOA. We, it's $20 a year whether you want to join or not. The majority of the money that we raise for Vero Lake Estates is through sponsorships. The majority of the people on here ask to be on here. They, they don't, so that's how we raise our money. We give out scholarships. We give out, we gave up so far, I think, five scholarships at Vero Lake Estates. They're not large, but they're to children who either go to, that live in VLE, that either go to a vocational school or onto college. Most of them have gone onto college, and most of them are going to the medical field. So that's where I am. We really and truly need to address the traffic there. I, every, every complaint I get is about, is about speeding, every single complaint. And I can tell you that when I'm putting out signs, one of two things happen. Either they want to help an old lady and think I'm abandoned by the road and, you know, can I help you? Or they're gonna try and kill me when I'm driving by and doing figure eights on the road. So I really and truly would appreciate it if you would address that. The other thing is the fire station. And the fire station, Fire Station 15 is not just about Vero Lake Estates, it's about the North County. It's about Sebastian as well. We need, here's the good news. We have the money to buy the land. This is amazing. We have the money to build the building. Again, amazing. We have the money to equip the building, and we have the money to pay the firemen, but we don't have a fire station. So I, and what I did was I went back in here and I wrote one letter. Of course, they did not respond. But I, I gave you in this little packet here, this is for the fire station. There are some plots in here showing you areas. You guys know people. I'm just me, okay? You guys know people. You should be going in here and seeing if you can get them to donate three acres of land or buy three acres of land. You need a fire station up there. You, we've had, we've had serious fires in Vero Lake Estates. And not even that, you know, I'm a little older, I'm a little concerned about the ambulances getting to my house, you know, it would be kind of nice. So honestly, these are, I put them back in here, and this is, it's in that packet here, and that's locations on the south side that they thought would work for fire stations. Some of them, some properties actually owned by Felsmere, so you might want to look at that, Susan, and see if we can, you know, just give us some acreage. You know? It's only three acres is all we need. When I spoke with the, the fire chief that came to our last meeting, all we need is three acres. And it's an important thing, between the roads being a public safety and the fire department being a public safety, and for the fact that maybe you need to take another look at Vero Lake Estates and understand that we're not, you know, we're a totally different community. Again, like I said, the last sale, which by the way I made, was $650,000 and one. They, they went up $1. They over, they want to do overbid. So, and it appraised, by the way. And the other one was 601. The closest one in Sebastian was 575. So, and Sebastian is by far the hottest market in all of Indian River County. Everyone wants to live in Sebastian. So that's what, what I have to say. I'm hoping that you're gonna be responsive to this. I've been asking for these roads for a very, very, very long time. It's time we be, we be heard. It's stop signs. I'm not, I'm not asking for traffic lights. I'm asking for public safety for my, for my community. I, I don't believe it's gonna stop the, the speeding problem. Nobody's that stupid, but I do believe it's gonna resolve it. And then there's another thing. If you, in my new car, when I drive down 83rd, the, the speed limit's 35. I don't know what, if it's a GPS map or whatever it is, but it does not register on there. You know how in your car, you get the little speeding sign that tells you what the, what speed is if you have a newer car? It doesn't have that in Vero Lake Estates, so maybe we need to do that with contact the people that do that as well. So that's, that's my story, and I hope you heard me, and I hope that you take a good hard look at what we do here in Vero Lake Estates. You are, you know, we, the gentleman said, everybody talks about being a president of the Homeowners Association. Again, 2,700 homes, maybe I get two calls a month, maybe, aside from the, the traffic thing. And the reality is, in Vero Lake Estates, we all take care of our own quarter acre. One of the things that's on this postcard here are all the numbers of people to call, all the important numbers. If they can't get help, then, then we go out and help them. That's it. Hope you heard me, and thank you so much. Any questions? You have any questions for me? No?
Thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Well, can I expect any action on this? I really and truly, we need to get this taken care of. I've been, this is, this is not a, you know, this is a serious issue.
I'm gonna speak on behalf of my fellow Commissioners. We don't normally take action on public discussion, but I'm sure that my Northern County counterparts have heard you loud and clear.
Well, what do I need to do? Really and truly, I'm, I'm here honestly because I'm 75, guys. I'm running out of time here, all right? I need to get this taken care of before I go.
Mary Lou, just, I, just some background information. Public Works is already looking at doing some study of 79th Avenue related to your concerns about traffic. So that's in the works. As far as the fire station situation goes, we did have a commitment from the City of Felsmere to provide acreage for the fire station. That was part of the annexation agreement for that property. The property switched hands, and for some reason, the City of Felsmere let them out of that requirement, so that's fallen through. I know Public Works is also working on, with our Realtor, trying to find property. They've taken the ones that you have submitted and have reached out to them on top of other property owners within that corridor. Part of the problem is the wetlands, there's a lot of wetlands within that corridor. So it's not just as simple as buying three acres. If you have three acres and one of it is wetlands, then there's extra costs for wetlands mitigation that goes along with that. So we are actively working through these issues that you brought to us. It's just that it takes a little bit of time to work through it before you start seeing results. But as far as the traffic speeding concern goes in VLE, that's a law enforcement issue. So I would, as I, I know we've had this conversation before, reach out to the sheriff. They should have somebody patrolling in those hotspot areas if it continues to be a problem. Because I know I see it on the Facebook page when people are complaining. I'm sure it's the same areas. It's, there's like three streets where it continues to be a problem. So I would hope that he's listening as well and will provide you guys with the enforcement capacity because no matter what traffic calming devices we put in place, it's just like you said, it, people don't necessarily stop at stop signs. It doesn't slow them down. It might discourage those of us that are good actors in the community, but the bad actors, it, it's gonna take enforcement. But I would look to my law enforcement counterparts to, to weigh in on that. But the fire station, we're actively looking for property and even trying to work with the state to see if there's something we can do.
I just want to say one thing. When I do contact, they come out all the time whenever I ask and make a, make a physical, you know, an email complaint. They're out there all the time. I, I don't, I have no complaints with roads and bridges. We also have, I have no complaints with roads and bridges. I think they're amazing. He always responds to my little love notes. And the same thing with, and I know, and the same thing with, with the sheriff's office. They're always out there. They, it's just that we, we're, we're growing, guys. If you drove, drive through Vero Lake Estates, you're gonna see two things. You're gonna see construction like you can't believe in this community. I think we have 300 open permits for new, new construction out there, and you're going to see new roofs, you know? The community is growing like crazy, and it's not the VLE of 10, it's not the VLE when I moved there 10 years ago. It's, this is a totally different community. It's, we, you know how many homes we have for sale out of 2,700 homes? We have 28, 28. Out of that, 12 of them or 13 of them are new construction. 2,700 homes, 28 homes for sale, highest sales in the North County of single-family homes. And by the way, on that, on that Sebastian demographic that I gave you, I didn't take out HOAs. And that home that sold for 575 wasn't an HOA. We're not an HOA community. And so, I mean, those are all things that you need to, to recognize. The community has changed. It's amazing. It's a great place to live, and I just want to make sure that nobody gets hurt on my watch. And again, for Trevor, I'd love to see a street named after Trevor. Nobody was better than her, and we miss her desperately. She was a great person.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
I guess that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. The VLE is very lucky to have you, and we appreciate you advocating so strongly for them.
I just wanted to say, you, you
I just wanted to say, you mentioned about the development and how it's changed. I remember responding in the late 90s to Vero Lake Estates, and I didn't respond to dirt roads. I responded to grass roads.
I know, I know.
The grass was growing where the cars went, because that's how few cars actually travel down that road. And every time you took a patrol car in there, it would cook the grass. So you had, you had to be cautious. You'd start a fire, you responded to a job.
I know. Well, that's not the case now.
It's not the case. And at the time, because of the development, the origin of Vero Lake Estates, roadways were not established. It then moved on to a $19 MSTU for roadway development. I believe that, as you recall, we pumped that up to $50.
We wanted to do 200.
And, and it's always an option. It's always an option to have that done, if we had the community's support to do that. Again, it appears on the tax bill, and it gets the roadways done quicker.
Well, again, because the population has changed, and the face of Vero Lake Estates has changed, VLE is a little bit different now. You're going, I don't think you're going to have the objection that you had when we tried to raise the, what is it, the MSTU fund.
Sure.
And our traffic, we don't have any problem with speeding on the dirt roads. And the issue that we have is, you know, realtors go in there and say, one, there's no restrictions in Vero Lake Estates. That's not true. We've got county restrictions, and that's something that needs to be recognized. A lot of agents don't put that in there. And the other is that, oh, I forgot what I was going to say there. But anyway, it's totally changed. And I have a house, I just sold a house that they bought it for 200,000, just sold it for 400,000. And they had it two years. And this, and our market is declining. You can say whatever you want to say, but the market is going to, it has to go down. It can't go, it can't go any higher. But it's, Vero Lake Estates was a, what I would call a future location, if you were smart enough to purchase in Vero Lake Estates several years ago. If you bought land, you know, 10 years ago, you know, you're walking around thinking how wonderful you are. But again, you need to recognize this community. I'm the only voice we have out there, and I'm getting old. You know, I'm getting old. And we need to get these things taken care of prior to me, you know, exiting the planet here. So I appreciate everything you've done. I hope that you take a really hard look at what I've given you. And I gave you some of the houses that sold. I gave you some of the houses that are for sale, just because I want you to understand that, you know, we're not, you know, we're not selling $80,000 bungalows anymore in Vero Lake Estates. You can be very proud of that community. And I thank you so much. You have the best day.
Thank you so very much. I think we've heard you loud and clear.
Yeah. I can't get any louder.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner, that, we're going to take five minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We'll call this meeting back to order, and we're moving on to item 11, County Administrator's Matter, 11A, Joint Meeting, City of Sebastian and Indian River County. I would tell you that Fred Jones, the mayor of Sebastian, called me. He couldn't be here today. He wanted to express his fact that he couldn't be here today. He felt bad about that, but he had a commitment that he had to be at. But he is also very, very welcome and glad this is happening. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you're aware, on Thursday, September 21st, from 10:00 to noon, we do have a joint city-county meeting with the city of Sebastian. It will be facilitated by Tom Linehan, the executive director for the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. So what you have before you in this item, it represents a list of items each of you have individually, as well as staff, have put some together, and we need to narrow it down to three to five items to make the two-hour meeting productive. The first item is septic-to-sewer, which would include, you know, an overview presentation on a utility capacity, talk about projects that are underway or planned, desired future projects, potential funding strategies, as well as the issue of TMDL credits. The second item, joint use planning for those, for the areas that are unincorporated, that are abutting municipal boundaries, with the discussion potentially on a support for an inter-local service boundary agreement. The third one, regional park partnership opportunities in terms of parks, recreation, between the city and the county, and in the North County area in Sebastian. The fourth would be the coordination of development impacts in terms of, as development's occurring in the city, impacting county roadways in other areas. One example was the development, the airport impacting Roseland Road and Central Airport Drive, the habitat conservation plan that we have in terms of, at the Sebastian Municipal Airport, the compliance with it. And then we had a series of questions that were submitted. What attributes of Sebastian make it unique? And what does the city believe the county should take into consideration? Number seven, is there an economic opportunity unique to the city and the surrounding area that might warrant a partnership opportunity? And number eight is where does the city of Sebastian hope to see the city in 20 years? What problems or opportunity does the city envision? So it's really turning it over to the board to try to narrow that down to three to five topics. We do have two hours. I do imagine that, I mean, here, each of you, we've talked about the septic-to-sewer. We've had recent meetings with our utilities director, talking about the issues that are coming up in terms of with the FDIP, the new law that was passed. So I think that's an issue that the city of Sebastian raised as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board, and we can talk about what you would like the three to five items to be. And then after that, I should share, I'll, you know, talking with Tom Linehan, I'll meet with Brian, or we'll talk to, Brian and I will talk. And if, say, we bring up an item, they say, well, we don't want to discuss that, then we'll mutually agree to strike that for a future meeting. Because you want to get the first one started off.
Other than the new ideas that you might have, I'm going to say that I feel that septic-to-sewer is one we need to talk about, because that's the only way we're going to solve this, is working together and trying to, you know, work with the state to facilitate some funding and what can be done and what can't be done. So I think that's huge. I think that's only, that's only, that's the only way we're going to protect our groundwater in the lagoon. I mean, that's a huge start, and I think the state's beginning to recognize that. So I would say that would be one. I'm going to kind of go in order, but the next one, the joint planning for unincorporated areas abutting municipal boundaries, makes sense, but I think we're going to have to encompass all those areas that touch. You know, it can't just be the south border of Sebastian right there at Indian River Drive. It needs to be others to touch. Maybe Vero Lake Estates is even in the mix with that or something. I mean, and the services that we provide up there, you know, between the sheriff and fire rescue services are all important. So I think that could, that could be, that could be another one. I think I may have been the one that brought the regional park partnership, if that's something that could be looked at with regards to improving our parks, maybe increasing the use of North County Park or Fran Adams Park, and maybe turning it into a regional park, maybe acquiring more land for open space, soccer fields, things like that. Recreation is becoming more and more, with more people living here and a younger group, it's becoming more and more, you know, a need. So the other thing, some of the questions they have, I mean, I think could be a good discussion. I don't know if it's anything that necessarily needs to be decided upon, and I think some of, some of the issues, I think staff could work on a, on a staff level with their staff to do it. But they're all, they're all good, but I think those first three are ones that I, that I looked at. But I am surely open to suggestions, and I would defer to my North County commissioners that they may have more insight this than I would. So Commissioner Fleischer, you want to start off?
Well, thank you, Ms. Chair. I don't know, you're pretty far away, but I don't know how you saw my playbook. That's exactly where I believe that we should be going. Those three items are of critical mass. We all recall what we've gone through with the septic-to-sewer challenges that we had along the riverfront, as well as in Roseland recently. And I believe that we need to keep that as a number-one priority. It's going to take a lot of work and a lot of expense, and we have to be very creative, but we're going to have to do it subsequent to the new mandate that was imposed upon us by our state legislature, that we're going to be making some changes. I think we need to keep that as a top priority. That's one. As far as the regional park, we have, we have the space. We have to get with the state. And I believe the same, that we, we need to expand what we have up there. It's a great environment, and it is underutilized, and it can be utilized in greater potential. There's not enough land, open space in Sebastian that we could just say, let's do it right there in the heart of Sebastian. But we can serve the Sebastian community, yes, I am a Sebastian resident. We can serve the Sebastian community far greater by expanding and making that a regional facility. That's of critical value as well. I do agree with the chairman that the other factors involved, some of those questions are the boundary, boundary lines, specifically with the needs and concerns for the expansion of the city of Sebastian with the recent change, will be a concern for the county, the, and the city, in order to ensure that the new residents that may be coming, whether it's five, 10, 15 years away, that we ensure that the infrastructure is intact and well-planned and well-designed and well-funded. So I believe those three, three items are where we should be going. The other, the other things, as you suggested, Ms. Chair, some of those items can, can be talked about with staff at another time or be incorporated in the larger scale.
It's my intent, thank you, it's my intent that this is not the only meeting, that we have future meetings of these. You know, there's things that we'll need to talk about, urban service line as we progress through that, and many other, and many other things with regard to that. So Commander Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I think those, those three are perfect. I have no problem with that. I would caution that, I think if we have a two-hour time span to discuss, that I'm not so sure that we'll even get through a robust discussion on all three of those items. I think the septic-to-sewer conversation is going to take a little bit of time, and the joint planning discussion is going to take a little bit of time. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to have a discussion about the regional park. I wouldn't add too much more to the list, because I think it just, it's, realistically, it's not.
Not productive.
It's not going to happen. There are some of the questions, I would be interested to kind of hear how they see themselves and what they see for the city, but that's a discussion, I think, that could happen at a future time. And part of it... And part of it will come out as we talk about the joint planning areas, I would imagine. So I'm fine with that list. I think that's, that's a good, those are all good starts to a discussion point. And I totally agree with Commissioner Fleischer's comments on that.
Commissioner Law?
Thank you, Chair. I think, I think we have to triage this and start with the dollars that are coming from Tallahassee. Number one, the lagoon dollars for our region. That's gigantic. The other dollars that are coming from Tallahassee, this session, this last session's affordable housing. I think we need to capitalize on any of those dollars that we can get. And finally, of course, septic to sewer.
Commissioner Moss?
I think this is a great first step. And I expect that this will be just the first step down a path where we're in a constant state of dialogue with the municipalities. I agree with you on the topics. I think that's, you know, I think it's fine to start there.
Mr. Administrator?
So what I have here is five, four, four, and then obviously the state dollars and affordable housing. And so if we had to take a priority for the purposes of, as I communicate with the, with Brian at the City of Sebastian, clearly septic to sewer and joint use planning would be our priority, priority-two issues. And then keep this list going, because if you recall, I shared, they have a list as well, that we would, you know, kind of look at future meetings if we can't cover all these topics.
Question. Commissioner Law, is, is, do you feel like an affordable housing discussion could be included in the joint use planning?
Could.
Or at least maybe an initial discussion?
Right, it could. And then, you know, after your next few meetings, I'm sure you're going to have more information on affordable housing.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just looking at the dollars that are floating.
No, I agree. I mean, if there's dollars that are coming from Tallahassee, and we can collaborate with them to make those dollars stretch further, and have projects that we're both working on that we can, you know, make into more meaningful projects for region, for the region, I think that's a great idea.
So at the, so I understand the collaboration in terms of dollars as it relates to Indian River Lagoon and septic to sewer. All right, I think I have what I need. Thank you very much.
You know, it's, it seems like the time constraint has been mentioned. It's two hours. I get it. We have a lot of people involved in the process, in the joint meeting. But the rent is rather reasonable for the room, and all it takes is an announcement to kind of expand it a little bit if we had to. We do have that authority and luxury.
We do have a limitation with the facilitator.
Why is that?
Well, in terms of his time, he's coming up from South Florida, and he only has the morning available on that particular day. So he has, we have about a two-hour timeframe.
Could we check and see if we wind up with a little, little extra baggage? If he can stick around a little longer?
He's already given us his time, his schedule. He has other commitments that afternoon, so he has to travel back to West Palm.
Trying to leave it open.
It depends on who.
But if we get, if we get the conversation going, you know, possibly we could continue.
Well, I would never say much.
Yeah, that's my.
I think we, I think we could work it out if Tom has to go. Tom has to go.
I'll be.
If we're in the height of a discussion.
Getting out of my shell, sir.
We can continue to discuss. Anything else? Misses, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Want to get things done.
All right. All right, with that, appreciate, appreciate your efforts putting that together, and I appreciate Brian's efforts also in Sebastian, putting it together. And Mr. City Manager Falls, we're going to, y'all have already been in a discussion, I think, also with topics, and we have a date set, I think, with the City of Vera Beach?
October 24th, 2:00 to 4:00.
Looking forward, looking forward to that.
It's on our calendars and, Tom.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Public Works, 12G1, Stormwater Pipeline Easement Request, Gifford Dock Park. Mr. Sparkle, welcome back.
Commissioners, Rich Verge, Public Works Director. So what we have today is the City of Vera Beach is planning to construct a stormwater pipeline that will go through a piece of property known as Gifford Dark, Gifford Dock Park. So the project's intended to go through the park, and what we have before you today is several items. One is a temporary construction easement that will be over the entire park for the duration of the construction project, along with the construction of a pavilion at the park. The second portion will be a permanent easement. Once the pipeline's constructed, and we know where the pipeline is, the city will prepare a permanent easement that will be for the pipeline itself. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city. Rob Bolton's here to give you a little presentation of what the city's up to, and how we're going to, how this is going to benefit the county as a whole.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Rob Bolton, City of Vera Beach, Water and Sewer Director. I put a presentation together today to kind of talk about the overall scope, and then eventually end up with the item which you need to vote today on, which is the easement. Good, next slide. I hit it? Oh, okay. So this project started roughly three years ago. As you're aware, we're on the verge of constructing a new wastewater treatment facility. And currently, we withdraw water from the main relief canal on a very small basis during drought periods of time. And the, the new facility, we have a lot of concerns that drawing water out of the canal system and putting it through a wastewater treatment facility that has membranes on the tail end would allow for fouling of the membranes by biological growth that could occur either through snail larvae or anything like that. So it, the original concept started with just a simple, all right, let's go ahead and pull some water out of the main canal, treat it through our water system, and then use it for supplementation for the reclaimed water system in times of need, which is drought, when most of the people leave this area that are seasonal. Our flows go down, but because of the drought, the demand for irrigation purposes go up, and we always have a shortfall every season. After that, it ballooned into something that's much larger. What has occurred is there's actually four phases now that we're looking at with this project. And it, the first phase is the main canal pump station. So we will actually construct a pump station at the main canal downstream of the county's facility that's right there, right by the railroad tracks. And we will pump up to four million gallons of water out of the canal to be filtered and chlorinated, and provide irrigation-quality water. The second phase of the project now is to construct a pipeline from the city's water treatment facility there at US-1 and the railroad tracks, up along the airport property to 41st Street. And then it will go west, and then north up the boulevard, and out 45th Street to the Gifford Dock Park, underneath the lagoon to Be Gun Point, and eventually out to A1A, and to tie into the Johns Island Water Management District's pipelines that they have existing in A1A. The third phase now is a conversion of an existing groundwater line that, that we have wells at the Graves property, which is now going to be the new sports complex for the school board. We have a well at the high school. We have a well at Troy Moody Park. And the pipelines that actually are used to transmit that water to the water treatment facility, will reverse the flow and allow for irrigation water now to go to Troy Moody Park, the entire high school area, the, the elementary school, the, the complex, and the city cemetery. And also eventually to look at sending it over to Charles Park. So that will be a great asset to no longer pull water out of the ground in that area, but instead to return the water to the groundwater in those areas. And then finally, the last phase that we're talking about, and is showing up in some of our public works projects now for future, would be to take that old pump station that we have out at 43rd, right there at the, the old Dodger Town property, and construct a line up 43rd, and actually use canal water to re, well, repurposing groundwater for, for mounding purposes for two reasons. One, it would allow for a recharge of the area in the airport property where we draw surface, surface aquifer water out of, for water purposes, for potable water. And it would also provide a mounding kind of buffer where the old city-county landfill site is, to make sure that any contaminants that are moving off that property are kind of stopped. You know, the county's been working for years to stop any of those contaminants by mounding water between the well field and the, and the landfill will also allow for that to slow down, and then dilute also. And then last, the canal intake structure, the pipeline, everything has been funded through St. John's, so it's identified in the water supply plan as one of the projects that they want us to construct. So here's the canal intake structure. If you look, there's the main canal on the left side. It's simply a box culvert that'll be constructed from the canal itself over to a pump station that'll be pretty much at grade, a little bit above grade. There will be a 10-by-15 electrical building for the pumps themselves. The pumps will sit outside and, and just be probably about three to five feet off, off the ground itself. We'll utilize some piping that we have to get it over to the water treatment facility that you see on the right-hand side. Then, as I discussed before, you have the pipeline that starts in the bottom-left corner. You'll see the water treatment plant, and the route that it'll take all the way over to pretty much the south gate of the Johns Island properties, where we have reclaimed water that's connected at that point. Here is the pipeline that I discussed, and all, in yellow are all the areas that are potential sites for irrigation. This is, a lot of this area is on the sand ridge itself. Also, that whole pipeline route, other customers can connect to it as, as we find the need for it. Some use groundwater wells now, but you never know. There may be people, or there may be future development that needs more water than they can get out of their existing wells. And then last is the pipeline up 43rd, with, conceptually, the areas that we would look at for putting in exfiltration trenches. So the primary project benefit of this entire four-phase of this project is alternative water supply. At the end of the day, we will be able to pull 3 million gallons on an average day out of the main canal. Roughly 20 million gallons go to tide every day. So we're only looking at 15%. On a max day, we could pull 4 million gallons of water out of the canal. And by doing so, we will offset, for, for example, if you look at the pipeline over to Johns Island, they are withdrawing a million gallons of water out of this official aquifer, or out of the Florida aquifer at Wabaso, pumping it across the bridge, and then south to their facility. They're also receiving a million and a half gallons of reclaimed water from us from the south. So by this pipeline and getting water to them, they will, we will be able to repurpose the million and a half gallons of reclaimed water to future customers south of them that are in need. And also, you will allow, you will stop the withdrawal of a million gallons a day out of the Florida aquifer, which will benefit the county as a whole as they look at growth that's occurring, especially up in the north part of the county area. And then also, if we, 43rd Avenue Pipeline, we would be able to withdraw 2 million gallons of water out of the canal, which is upstream, and use that for recharging the aquifer. So if you look at the DEP factoid, prior to 1980, we used to withdraw a lot of water out of, out of the surface waters. Then it started into withdrawals out of the groundwater. And, you know, now, over the next 20 years, you're going to be, public supplies expect to increase by roughly 29% as we move forward. And, and so we have to find alternative water supplies for non-potable water use. Secondary benefit for this project is the removal of the water which has nitrogen and phosphorus in it, that's going to the lagoon every day. So if you look at the, the loadings just from what we would do in the first three phases of this project, you're looking at stopping roughly 10,000 pounds of nitrogen that's going to the lagoon every year, and about 1,500 pounds of phosphor that's going to the lagoon every year. The last phase, if we're able to construct that, you're going to be looking at an additional 6,500 pounds of nitrogen that will be stopped from going to the lagoon, and roughly 1,000 pounds of phosphorus that'll be stopped from going to a lagoon every year. So who's the stakeholders in this project? There's a lot of us. There's the City of Vera Beach, there's the St. John's River Water Management District, there's Johns Island Water Management District, there's Indian River County. We've had the Clean Water Coalition involved in it. We've had the Indian River Neighborhood Associate involved in it. We've talked with the Gifford Progressive Civic League. We've talked with the Town of Indian River Shores. We've had mosquito control involved in this project. And, and also, since the project is going through some right-of-ways that are on the Land Trust property, we've talked with them about the project. Current status of the project is the canal intake structure is, and that project is underway. We have a contractor. They're ordering stuff. There's been delays, like Rich was saying earlier, and we're starting, getting ready to start construction before the end of the year. The design of the pipeline is 100%. Permits, there was a lot of permits required. There was county permit for DEP, DOT, Army Corps, St. John's, Indian River Farms, Water Control District, FEC, and the Town of Indian River Shores right-of-way. Current status is that Indian River County, we've worked with Rich, multiple iterations, back and forth, with comments, and, and readdressing items of concern. I think we've satisfied everything that he has. The last item is the, to obtain this easement before he could issue a permit for the right-of-way. DEP for the Sabakua is crossing. We've responded to their second request for information. That's been delayed, because every time we've submitted, they have a new plans reviewer, and they give us the same comments back. So it's been, so finally, we've met with them, and hopefully, they should issue soon. DOT, we received three separate permits for that. The Army Corps, just yesterday, we got the permit from Army Corps to go underneath the lagoon. So all we're waiting for is a DEP permit. And St. John's, we received a consumptive use modification for withdrawals of 4 million gallons per day out of the main canal for this project. Indian River Farms, we've received a permit to construct in their right-of-way. FEC, we will submit this week for that last permit. We don't see anything. They have a standard detail of, of how they want pipes to be installed underneath their rail system. We have many of them throughout the whole city that are going under the rail system. And we received the Town of Indian River Shores permit. So funding, we've received a million and a half from St. John's through cost share for the canal intake structure. We also secured another 2.2 million gallons from St. John's for the pipeline. We're awaiting a decision on 1.2 million gallons, our grant through the FDEP Alternative Water Supply Grant Program. And we should find out by the end of the month if we receive that or not. We have a commitment from Johns Island for 9.7 million. And we have budgeted funds for the remaining costs of the canal intake structures and modifications as needed. The city will apply for St. John's grants for the fourth part of this project, which is that 43rd Avenue Pipeline, as we see fit in the future. So here was the timeline. So we first started with this at a budget hearing in, in 2020, summer of 2020. And actually, here we are, 2023, three years later. There was a lot of meetings. I met with you Chairman Ehrman on site back three years ago now. And we've met with Commissioner Moss over different times. ago now, and we've met with Commissioner Moss over different times, and you can read through that we, we had a lot of meetings, we met with a lot of people, and then, within that first year, and then we started design, and that's probably where my fault is, I didn't keep those meetings going after that period of time because a lot of people forgot about the project or felt that they weren't, were not involved in it through the whole entire process. In addition to the above, the city held a lot of onsite meetings with the Clean Water Coalition, there was a lot of concern at Beegum Point of the environmental effects of such a pipeline being installed in that area, again, with mosquito control, the land trust, the RNA, and also, the Audubon was there at the time. So here we are today, looking for the last piece to kind of get this project started, and, and that is the easement at Gifford Dock Park. If you look at the hatched area, that is the area that the eventual permanent easement will be needed. The rest of the park will be needed for the construction during the period of time. We anticipate it could start, it probably will start in May because the receiving end, which is the Gifford, or the, at land trust property at Beegum Point, they don't want any construction in there all the way up till May 1st because of migratory bird season, so they've requested that we construct in that area after the 1st of, of May. Therefore, we wouldn't really start this until after the 1st of May. If you look at the pink hatched area, that is the submerged land easement that will be issued to us from the state. The black hatch area is what the permanent easement would look at like for the park itself. None of the pipeline, you, nothing comes above ground. The only thing you'll see is maybe an air-release valve that can even be buried, you know, off to the side somewhere, and that would not be anywhere in the parking lot or anything like that. So it'll just be returned as a parking lot at the end of the day. The kind of picture to the right is what we propose as a picnic shelter. We're going to have to go through your site plan process, and when we do, we will also get back with the Gifford Civic Lead to discuss what that shelter would look like. Right now, this is the same shelter that we have at Young Park, just down the river or lagoon, but it could be something different if, if that's the choice of the community itself that will be enjoying it. The location is, that we're proposing is at the dock area entrance, it's the, allows for the parking to be, remain the parking, and, but if the community chooses to have it in a different location, we can surely do that. With that, I turn it back over to Rich, unless you have any questions.
Any questions of Rob? Well, Commissioner?
Ms. Jim? Rob, it, it's very easy to support a project that's going to save potable water, or water that can be made potable as opposed to that water that cannot, but can be used for an alternative use. You did mention something about contamination. Are you going to monitor at the, the offload site?
Yeah, the county, you, you all do now through, through your, the landfill group. Yeah, they monitor, and, and we, we get reports back all the time, so.
I know we're doing that monitoring, but as far as when you're moving that water.
Yeah, if we move that water and put it up on that site, then we should see a change, you know, in the future as what moves offsite, so it should go down, you know, the concentration. So until that's constructed, we really wouldn't be able, but, but we definitely would, would look at, you know, how it's affected.
You mentioned the, the migratory birds, that you'll, you'll have to change the, the timing a bit and tighten it up. How much disruption will there be at that, the dock site? Will they still be able to use it, or it'll have to be shut down?
It'll be up to the contractor, it's most likely going to have to be shut down because even when we come out with the pipeline, there'll be, it'll be bored and you'll be, the road will be closed for a period of time, but we will work with the contractor to open it up as quickly as possible. Worst-case scenario we looked at was 90 days. I don't think it's going to take that long. You're, you're typically looking at a mobilization, get onsite, get ready for something over a two-week period, and then the bore shouldn't take more than four or five days, and then it's, you know, boring out the roadway from there, which should only take another couple weeks. So, you know, it's more like a 30-day, 45-day of closure and then reopen back up, so, but we, we estimated 90 days maximum that it would take.
I appreciate your presentation there. I, I don't know, I was going to ask there, what are you doing in your spare time?
I go scuba diving.
You've put a lot into this, a lot into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moss? Thank you. This project is so old that I was the vice mayor of Vera Beach when it began, and thank you for reminding me of that. But not only will it serve to conserve our potable water, as my colleague has pointed out, but it will also reduce nutrients into the lagoon, the discharge. So that's a huge plus. And before it gets any later in the day, I'm, I'm prepared to move, to approve the temporary construction easement and the issuance of a permanent pipeline easement after the installation of the pipeline.
I'll be glad to second that. But I'm still going to, we'll discuss a little bit, and I know Rich may want to say a few things, and maybe the administrator or somebody else, but, yeah, Rob, I met with you and, and with Bruce Danbridge and, and a few others, I think Mr. Idlet was there too. We talked about this. Back then, I, I thought it was a, a good project, and I think it's a great project now. I mean, with the fact that you're expanding the potential to use the reclaimed water elsewhere, and the fact that the Johns Island folks are a big part of this, and you've got all the groups on board, I think it's great. This kind of fits into what my plan was, to move some water west and take out stormwater out of the canals and store it or move it or whatever, and we're still working on that. Again, these projects take time, but I think this is a great project, and this is one of the things that I was looking for. You heard us just talk about the meeting with Sebastian, we're going to have one with Vera. These are the things that I was talking about that we can work together on. So I would say, I would ask the county administrator to, to make our folks available when you need them for something, because I think this could be a collaborative project. You guys are the lead in it, you've done all the work, but, you know, how can we help farther than just give you an easement? I mean, you know, if we can do something, you know, Rich can send a front-end loader or a backhoe out there to help you, I mean, y'all got those too, but if you need an extra one, you know, maybe we got time, we can do that if it's available, but I just think this is the type of stuff that, that, that we as county government and city government need to look at for helping the whole county, and I think this checks all the marks on that. I think you have, you have done an exceptional job on this to check the marks, and between you and, and, and city manager follows, y'all have done a great job on this. So, so, yeah, I'm, I'm proud to second it, but any other further discussion for commissioners or anybody else in the general public want to say something? Rich, you think you wanted to add to Rob's plan?
And I want to thank Rich, I think, from the comments, I think he personally reviewed this project. Normally, he has a staff do it, but I could tell some of the comments that came through that were from him, so.
Anybody else wants to comment or ask you having questions?
Chairman, I think it's, it's a fantastic idea. What I appreciate the most, Rob, is that it's paid, it's going to be paid for, not by our taxpayers here. Additionally, all of the, the meetings that you've had, you haven't jumped into this project and like we have in the past where perhaps maybe the community didn't know what we were doing, so congratulations on all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, good job. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir, do you have any question, any question on that?
Tom Sullivan, 418 West 16th Square.
Let him go ahead. Go ahead. Make it quick, please.
Yeah, could, Rick, could you just bring up the, the, the pipeline route? This is a constituency question, I think what you're doing is wonderful, but there's people that make me come here and do this.
Yeah, here we go. The pipeline goes up to 41st and goes east?
Sir, could you speak into the mic, please?
So, so I, I, the curiosity from one of my constituents was why the pipeline didn't go up to 45th, eliminate a turn or two, I, I know nothing about hydraulics, okay, and then just go straight over. Is there an answer I can give on that?
Yeah, the, actually, going up to, turning at 41st was needed because north of there are Old Dixie and that whole area, the corridor is really, really tight between the railroad and Old Dixie, and there's a lot of stuff in it. There's all kinds of major power poles and, and other utilities and sidewalks, and that's the reason why we went and turned and went 41st.
That's the answer. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank Monty and Rob, and certainly appreciate the opportunity, your patience more like it, in my second week of being with the county and meeting to go over this project, as well as the additional meetings that were held and inviting, you know, important stakeholders to the meetings. Greatly appreciate that collaboration, and just want to thank them publicly for that.
Mr. Chairman, Monty follows city manager, and I echo what John says. This has been a great collaborative effort between the city and the county and a, a private enterprise, Johns Island Water Management, and I think we have a great project, and I think this is really a kickoff of the city and county working together on projects in the future, but thank you so much.
Sure. All right, Commissioner, I have a motion by Commissioner Moss, I can by myself. Anyone else?
Good morning, my name is Joe Idlet, 45th, 7th and 57th Avenue. We didn't, I guess I found out last, yesterday late afternoon about today. I guess a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. We were invited to the, a meeting with Commissioner Moss and Rob Dos, and at that meeting, we, we basically listened because she called us like a couple of days prior to the meeting. So we basically listened to what was happening, and Rob Dos did fill us in on a lot of things. The second meeting that they had, we were not able to attend, that's when Fredo was hurt and I had something going on, so we did not attend the second meeting. And we know, we've learned over time that when, when we are invited to meetings, basically the, the decision has already been made prior to us coming to the meeting. So we are just like a facade, you know, just so they'd be able to say that we, we did meet with Gifford. We, I'm, I'm not here to, to destroy the meeting or to anything, but I do want to say that Gifford was not afforded the opportunity to say that we approved the, the project or we disapproved the project. So I, I wanted to let that be known, that that opportunity was not afforded to us, but like I said, I'm not here to destroy the, the project, but I wanted to let you know that we didn't have a say one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Say none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, 12G2, Indigo Vera LLC, Developers Agreement, 46 Place at the Tracking Station Park. Mr. Parker, you a busy man today?
Yep, my turn at the podium. You got that? So what we have before you today, Commissioners, is a developers agreement between the developer of a property that is next to Tracking Station Park, accesses off of 46 Place. This is also the access entrance to Tracking Station Park, which is a popular beach access point for the county. The developer and their engineer approached us a couple of years ago about enhancing the entrance to the park and their establishment at the same time. The county, Public Works, had this roadway on its radar for some resurfacing and some work at the time, along with some drainage improvements, which has been incorporated into the developers agreement and the design. Go ahead. So what we have in, for you in front of you right now is the aerial of the existing conditions. You can see where they're already on the construction for the development. 46 Place basically just comes in and it just turns a 90-degree angle and goes up into the park. So this is just another, this is the survey, you can see it's just basically a road, access to the 711 and access to the commercial development to the north. So the design, the new design has, it's going to be a curb and gun across section, brand-new road, it kind of makes a gentler access to the park. As you can see, the, the roadway doesn't do a 90-degree angle anymore, now it just kind of gently rides into the park. Going to have sidewalk improvements, drainage improvements, as you can see, there's a stormwater retention in the park site, along with some stormwater retention and treatment on 46 Place. We're going to fix a drainage issue that was on A1A, that DOT wasn't able to solve back when they did the A1A widening, we're going to solve this problem for them so that we can make it a better-looking area for the residents that utilize the park. So with that, it, the developer is asking the county to participate 20% of the total cost of $563,498. The county's participation would be $112,699. This was, as I said earlier, the county was working on doing some improvements to this roadway, so this, this is a way for us to partner with the developer and get actually a better product than we would have been able to put in at the time. Funding is not currently available and can be programmed into the capital improvement element, which we start, we've already started looking into for the construction of this project. With that, staff recommends that the board approve the developers agreement with Indigo Vera LLC and authorizes District 2 traffic impact fee funding in the amount not to exceed $112,699.60, and authorize the chair to execute the developers agreement after review and approval by the county attorney's office for legal sufficiency. I'd also like to add that Parks was involved in this, Beth and Mike and their staff were involved in this too, and, and their input was basically the same, it's going to enhance the access to the park and, and the look and feel of the park. With that, I turn it over for questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
I just have a comment. I know that we have had some problems in the past, not maybe necessarily with this development, but other developments within the vicinity of Tracking Station as far as access points go, and while I'm fine with the developers agreement and the enhancement to the park and the park entrance, I just want everybody to understand that it's a public park. I want to make sure that it's not being encroached upon by development and then kind of turned into a quasi-private slash amenity for the development because it is our only, or one of our only handicap accessible parks within the county, and it's a county public park. I just want to make sure everybody involved in this developers agreement understands that the public will still be using the park and accessing it, and while we appreciate their collaboration, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
And we are, it's a public road with public access, that we know, no impediments to the park at all by the development.
Thank you.
I did share the same concern and did speak with Mike and Beth about the accessibility as well, and I, I hope that, no, I know it will be maintained.
Chairman, motion approved.
I'll second.
The motion by Commissioner Law, second by Commissioner Adams.
No, no, I didn't.
Anybody from the public wish to comment?
I said it.
I second it.
Joe's not here, I want to get my money's worth. How you doing, Tom Sullivan? Signage, I was an athletic director in my early career, signage always helps. I was an athletic director in my early career. Signage always helps. I remember designing gymnastians, you know, which way the girls' rooms are, which way the men's rooms are. Signage is big. So, when you're riding down a road and you don't want something to be private, you put up a sign that says "Public Beach," and that diffuses some of the concerns that Susan has, which I also, I also share. A lot of times when people do this, they sort of design things in where, oh, should we be here? So, I commend you on that, too.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to H, Utility Services, twelve H one, developers agreement with Go Life Holding LLC for a twelve-inch water main extension from Ninetieth Avenue to Ninety-Eighth Avenue. Mr. Liski, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Liski, Utilities Director. Bringing today, for you today, a developers agreement between Utilities Department and Go Life Holding, associated with the development they are proposing on the west side of Ninety-Five, just south of the Outlet Malls and to the east of Verona Trace. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that area, or if you all are. But right now, that area, the current development in that area is served by a single water main that crosses over on U.S. Highway sixty. And so, as that area gets additional development, we had some concerns about continuing to provide that area with a single source of water. So, in working with them, we have brought forth this developers agreement to actually add a second line as they develop that area, a second water main from Ninetieth Avenue to, which is on the east of Ninety-Five, to Ninety-Eighth Avenue, which is on the west of Ninety-Five, to basically create a looping of that system. And I don't know how many of you are familiar, but about a year ago, we had a water main break on that, on that water main, and the area of Verona Trace was that water for several days associated with that water main break. We do not want to allow that to continue to happen, so we have asked to have this redundant line put in. It's been identified in our comprehensive plan to have that line as development occurs out there. So, we are entering into this developers agreement as they develop that to add a second water main, to provide some redundancy and to ensure that we have water supply to that area. The development is gonna be about nine hundred homes, and currently, as I mentioned, we have the Outlet Mall over there. We have a couple of hotels. The Verona Trace, I believe, has, they have about a hundred and fifty-six single-family and two hundred and ninety townhomes. So, we wanted to ensure that the area was not without water for an extended period of time. Yeah, as we get into this, what we evaluated was what they would be adding to, the home, number of homes they would be adding to the area as well as what's existing and what future development may occur in the area, to come up with what a percentage was for the utilities to cover versus what they would cover. And in the agreement, it's about a sixty percent, forty percent split. They would be coming forty percent, the Utilities Department would be coming the remaining sixty. We currently have estimates right now, if we were to probably build it today, of around three to four million dollars. Depending upon when that occurs, that price could go up, and our cost would be approximately sixty percent of the overall cost of the project. And so, you know, right now, if we were to again build it today, that cost would be anywhere from one point eight to two point four million dollars, depending upon when that development actually occurs and when the home's, you know, construction starts. Those prices could slightly go up depending upon current, current prices of installation of water lines. So, and I'm asking for today for you all to approve the developers agreement to move this project forward.
Aye, motion approved. I guess there are no questions. So, a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Law. Anybody from the public wish to comment on the motion? Seeing none, Commissioners, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item thirteen, County Attorney's Matters. This was in addition to the resolution of the joint county, city of Sebastian meeting. Counselor?
Yes. Chapter one twenty-five of the Florida statutes deals with, in part, joint meetings between the county and municipalities. There are only two requirements cited in the statute. Number one, that they have to be advertised in some way, shape, or form, and secondly, that there's a resolution approving the meetings. So, I would ask you to go ahead and approve the resolution so that you can go ahead and proceed with meetings for the city of Sebastian and the city of Vero Beach. When the other meetings are finalized, I'll bring another resolution approving those meetings as well.
Commissioners, any questions as a counselor?
No questions.
Motion by?
Motion, so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fleischer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Law. Anybody in the public wish to comment?
Thank you, counsel.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, next, moving on to Commissioners Matters. Item C, Commissioner Fleischer, public records where clarification. Do you need action on this, sir, or?
No, there is no action on this. There's no reason for any further discussion. Actually, the action has been taken, but I'd just like to say a few words.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we all may recall, last meeting, there was dispersions of threats. Maybe it's my background. It reminds me of, you know, you can't use the word B-O-M-B on an airplane and not expect to get to your destination. You, especially when there is none onboard. You can't mention the word F-I-R-E in a crowded movie theater, especially if there is none. It does cause public annoyance, alarm, disturbance, question, doubt. When, when it was asserted that there was threats during a meeting, and there was a series of emails that were very threatening, it asserted that same annoyance and alarm. And I just wanted the public to know because it compelled me to look back at all of the emails, to have my assistant pull all of the emails, and quite frankly, I was refreshed because they were actually redeeming and flattering. They were not threatening, but there were some that felt that their emails were characterized as threatening. So, what I've done was included them into public record to ensure that everyone has a chance to see them, that there was no threats, there's no need for concern. I do want to offer to all of my commissioners on the dais that if they ever perceive a threat or they perceive any, anything of concern, that law enforcement is notified and our county attorney is notified as well. Because in today's political environment, when we say the word threat, it's far more than just, well, it was a scare tactic. There is far more value today than ever before. So, I believe that we need to be cautious, and we need to have the record so reflect accordingly. And I, one other thing is, to, for the public, any and all emails that come to us, that are directed to us, are the public property. They do come to us. We receive them. If another commissioner is CC'd, then it goes to them as well. That's the intent of the sender, not of the receiver. We do not share emails. However, since they are public, and I know that most of these emails were not seen by many, that are included in the backup, the emails then, it is the opportunity for a commissioner to request. There is record of that request, of the other commissioner's emails. So, once again, I want the public to be reassured that they, that I want to encourage their input because that's what makes for greater governance, the open line of communication and the inquiry that we receive and the assertions we receive by those emails. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Anything else for the?
Yes, I would appreciate the opportunity to respond. Thank you. Those were not all the emails. Let me back up. Protecting the public good is paramount to me. I live it, I breathe it. What follows is something that I had not previously planned to discuss here. However, Commissioner Fleischer has forced the issue, and now I am obligated to discuss this matter publicly. As you know, my memorandum on our agenda at the last meeting requested an open discussion by us, free of the pressure of voting on a budget. From correspondence that I received, and this was an email not uploaded by Commissioner Fleischer, and perhaps he didn't receive it, but from a correspondence I received, those in power at United Way sent an email to the CSAC nonprofits stating that the process was, quotes, "under attack" and that they need to defend, and that's another quote. As elected officials, we have a responsibility to protect the public good and a right to free speech in the conduct of our business. No nonprofit should attempt to interfere with our free speech or our fiduciary responsibilities. When a large, powerful nonprofit takes it upon itself to attempt to derail an open discussion among elected officials held publicly before the entire community by?
Wait a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Let me finish.
No, 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 no. Wait a minute. Mr. Chairman.
Sir, I have the floor.
I wanted to correct.
Sir, I have the floor.
The record. I have never seen, heard that email. It was not directed to me.
By calling it an attack.
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. She's changing the whole.
Why?
Composition.
You, you.
Please.
This email was received. Furthermore, nonprofits.
It was received to who?
I received it.
You received it. Thank you.
It's public record.
Mr. Chair, my.
Stop interrupting.
My item is done.
You, that's fine.
That is it. We're changing the composition of the item.
I have a right to respond. Nonprofits are required by law to refrain from taking political positions and interfering in the process of government. They are prohibited from lobbying and political intervention, which is what happened. Our nonprofits do great work for the community. However, the IRS code must be observed, and as this is an IRS matter, I would suggest that we allow staff to inform each of us individually going forward.
Chairman, you're gonna force me to read the verbatim of the meeting.
And conclude our discussion at this time.
And it clearly states something different, very different than what Commissioner Moss is stating now. I have the verbatim account of the meeting, and she stated very clearly, I didn't mention her name until she just chimed in. But I want to be clear that she mentioned several times that I was personally threatened, that I received those emails, that these emails, this is according to the clerk. This is verbatim, verbatim, not characterized.
You did, you were not in possession of all the emails.
You may be entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts, and you imposed facts that are inaccurate, and you corrupted our community by your very words, and you got them in a heightened sense of concern. I will read you the entire transcript. The transcript is very clear. You were very assertive about what you said. You said you read my email, my emails. You did not, did not. Fact. You had no opportunity to read my personal emails because I would know, and I've already checked. You had no opportunity to do that. I didn't intend on this to be a discussion. I didn't intend to this to be a debate. I do not want to burden.
Well, your record is incomplete.
But you have done so very well, once again.
Your record is incomplete, sir.
Stay in your, no, no, now you're gonna tell me that.
If you want me to upload it next at the next meeting, but I think we should leave this as a private discussion going forward.
No, no, we can't have a private discussion, Ms. Moss.
No, not, not you and I, with the nonprofits.
Okay, are we done?
And as, as we directed it was. But I don't want to see you derail our great open line of communication with our citizens by assertions of contempt that you have clearly made. Perhaps maybe I should.
All I've said is that what you uploaded is incomplete. That's all I've said.
No, no, it is not incomplete.
Yes, it is.
My emails are my emails.
I can correct that at the next meeting.
And they are complete and submitted.
Okay, I think, I think that there's two separate, there's two separate records. Commissioner Moss, you have your record. Commissioner Fleischer has his. But we've discussed it enough. We discussed it at the last meeting. We've now discussed it again. I appreciate the issue of harassment. I appreciate that your emails are different. My emails are different as well. Commissioner Fleischer is referring to his. I think the matter is over at this point, and let's just.
Thank you.
Move on.
Madam Chairman, I would agree. Commissioner, I think we, again, not to repeat what you just said, but I think at the last meeting, we ended it. We went through the parliamentary process of removing that matter because of different reasons, and we felt like it was. Some of the remarks made were probably not good remarks at the time. Commissioner Fleischer, thank you for clearing that up today, I think, in a professional manner. Commissioner Moss, your comments are your comments. Frankly, I think as your chairman, I think this discussion is done.
Thank you.
And we will meet on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, at nine a.m. Tomorrow, don't forget the budget hearing at five p.m. tomorrow for the preliminary budget hearing, and we'll have one more after that. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned.